Five, four, three, two, one.
Good morning or good evening and welcome to the last of two meetings this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of City of Beach Grove. This time we will convene a special city council meeting concerning the 2013 budget. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each council member to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Ted Bell, District Two.
Kathy Coats, At Large.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening, everyone. We'll jump right into new business with the introduction of the 2013 budget for the library. And ask our librarian to step forward and present her budget to us, please.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Liz Shetley, for those of you who don't know me, I am the Director at the library. So you should have a copy of the budget, I'll just run through. The library has three funds, so I'm gonna start with the general fund. In Section One, under Personnel Services, Salary of the Librarian, $5,600. Wages of hourly employees, $100,000. Salary of reference librarian, $45,000. Salary of children's librarian, $34,000. Salary of circulation supervisor, $26,000. For a total of $2,061,000. Next, we move down to Employee Benefits. Employees' share of FICA, $2,600. This is a decrease from last year because the library actually has fewer employees moving forward. And... Did you have questions?
Well, mine shows different. You said FICA shows $2,600, mine shows $26,000.
Oh, $26,000, I'm sorry, I read it wrong. Employees' contribution to PERF, $18,000. This is an increase from 2012 because the percentage is going up for 2013. Employees' contribution to group insurance, $58,000. For a total of $102,000. Now we move to Other Personnel Services, just that general line item, Other Personnel Services, $4,000. For a total of $367,000. Now we move on to Supplies. Official records, $500. Stationery and printing, $2,000. Other office supplies, $10,000. For a total of $1,200, $500. Now we have another line of other supplies. Cleaning and sanitation supplies, $2,000. Other operating supplies, $5,000. For a total of $7,000, which is less than what was budgeted for last year. Repair and maintenance supplies. Other repair and maintenance supplies, $4,000. Total supply amount, $23,500. Moving to Section Three, which is Professional Services. Consulting services, $1,000. Legal services, $1,000. Other professional services, $30,000. This includes things like our cleaning crew, computer, IT tech support. We don't have anyone on staff. We have to have someone from the outside do that. Then we move to 32,000 for a total there. I think I already said that. Communication and transportation. Telephone and Internet, $2,500. Postage, $2,000. Travel expense, $1,000. Professional meetings, $1,000. Our T- we have two T1 lines for the Internet access, $5,000. Capital outlays. Improvements other than the building, $1,000. Machinery, furniture. Furniture and equipment, $15,000. Other capital outlays. Books, $190,000. Periodicals and newspapers, $5,000. Non-print materials, so this would be things like DVDs, databases and stuff like that, $25,000. Total there, $220,000. So the total capital outlays when you add both of those are $2,036,000. The whole for that fund is $903,700. Any questions before I move to my next one? Oh wait, no, I think I'm not done yet, sorry. Advertising, $700. Insurance. Official bonds, $500. Other insurance, $35,000. This is other insurance, this isn't like insurance for the employees, this is like insurance on the building and that type of thing. Utilities. Gas, $14,000. Electricity, $30,000. Water, $1,000. Waste disposal, trash, $1,000. Total, $46,000. Repair and maintenance on the equipment, I budgeted $20,000 for that. There's a new category, it's called Debt Services. The library has some outstanding debt and while we have a budget for Debt Services, we have to use some of our general fund to pay for that, so I have built that into the budget, which they have not done in the past. That amount is $130,000. Other services. Dues, $1,000. Taxes and assessments, $500. So now the total is... Is $903,700. Get that last page. Any questions? My next two won't be quite as long.
Yeah, you looked at everything and you've cut it as far as you can cut it?
I have.
And what is this past debt that you're talking about?
Well, it was the debt on when they did the remodel, well before I came and they did...
And that hasn't been paid yet?
No. No, those debts are usually very long. It will be... The last payment should be at the end of 2016, which I know sounds like a long way away.
And why can't we get any information at the library? Like I went down there, I requested certain things, nobody's ever called me, no one ever answered my questions.
Well, we'd be more than happy to.
But you wouldn't do it last January and February. Why would you be happy to do it now?
What's this got to do with debt? Another...
Your budget? Because he's requesting information.
Like this?
What's your question, council?
Yeah, I was just wanting to know how much some of these programs cost us, what our statistics are and where we're spending all this money. I mean, you know, just common knowledge. So I can go to the library and get that information.
Yes. Any other questions?
Just a question about the ones you pointed out that are decreases from 2012. Are the others static or are they increases?
Most of them are static, you know, some of them... I try to point out where there are increases. The biggest increase is putting in an actual budget item or a budget, a line item for that payment of that, on that debt. Most everything is very static or I tried to decrease it.
And the salaries and wages of the library directors, whatever title is, and then the hourly employees, does that include an increase or no?
Maybe small, but we will just really have to see if we're able to give any salary increases.
I was just curious, I know now I ain't putting that...
Right.
Thank you.
Our next fund is our Debt Services Fund, which there's all these pages for the Debt Services Fund, but literally there's only... It's zeros to everything until the debt service, which is on the third page, our debt payment, we make two debt payments and it's $352,000, so that's what the budget and amount is. Everything else literally is zero. So any questions on that?
Liz, how many bonds does the library have outstanding?
We just have the one.
Just one bond?
Yeah. And then the last fund is what we call LRF, which is Library Improvement Reserve Fund. Again, most of these numbers are zeros until you get to the capital outlays and LRF can be used to make improvements in the library, so furniture and equipment, but it's not a fund that's funded. It's money that either the library has set aside in past years. We don't get any money from property taxes or anything, but we still have to ask for that to be able to use it in the next calendar year or in the next budget year. So furniture and equipment, $20,000. And then non-print materials, $50,000. For a total of $25,000. And the idea is not to use that unless we really have to, but it's easier to budget for it than have to go back and ask to be able to use it later, so... So that is the library's budget for 2013.
Is there an increase over last year?
There is an increase over last year. Well, and it looks like a much bigger increase last year. Last, our 2012 budget actually reverted back to 2011 because the previous director didn't do this process as it was supposed to be done, so they reverted us back to 2011. So yes, the budget for 2012 is, 13 is bigger than this year's budget.
All right. Was there a percentage you could tell us?
It is about... Actually, if you take off the lease payments, the $130,000 that we'll have to use for general, it is actually less, but because I felt that needed to be budgeted, it's more. It's about... So it's about $100,000 more.
Is any of that, you said was makeup from 2011, 2012 to correct deficiencies in the budget? Is that what you were saying?
No. The amount that was approved for 2012 is really the amounts that were approved for 2011, so I didn't really, I mean, I didn't try to make anything up. And it was just the whole, that this process is new for the library. You know, before, the library's board has done all the approval of the budget process, so she just, the previous director, didn't bring this, the budget to the council.
I just have one more.
Sure.
Just for purposes of the public, where does your funding come from?
Mainly from property taxes, the bulk of it.
All right, thank you, Liz. There's three people who have signed up to speak, and I'm not sure if any of them want to speak concerning the library budget. If not, is there anybody in the audience tonight who would like to speak on the library budget who did not sign up? Okay. Jeff, could you come up for a minute and explain the process on why the library has to present their budget to the common council of the City of Beach Grove?
A few years ago, the county councils went to having a process where they have non-binding review and binding review. Non-binding review for elected bodies such as yourselves, binding review for appointed bodies. The law for Marion County as a unigov county and the only one in the state has specific laws. That was clarified in the last session, and it says that you will be the binding fiscal body for the library as it is basically a subset of your entity and created out of the City of Beach Grove. So you now have those responsibilities that previously were bestowed on the county councils around the state for appointed bodies.
Okay. If I wanted to compare 2011 since 2012 got rejected and reverted back to 2011, where would I find that information to be able to compare the two budgets?
You probably have to...
I'd be happy to get that.
Request that, and you know, that's...
Could you get me seven of them?
Yeah.
One for every...
Yeah.
Maybe eight of them, one for the mayor.
Thank you. Because you know, that reversion back to the previous year's budget is just an administrative failure.
I understand that part. Somebody ooshed, so they went, "Go back a year."
Correct.
Yeah. Any comments by council members?
I would defer to you. I would make a recommendation that we approve the library's budget on first reading only, provided that the librarian supply additional information for our October 15th meeting.
I would make said motion, Art.
I will second said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Liz, if you could bring that information forward to us, we would be grateful. We will hear this again on second and third reading on October the 15th. Thank you so much.
This time we would move on with new business to the introduction of the Civil-City of Beach Grove budget for 2013. And I passed out a couple of documents. One of them is bullet points pursuant to the individual budgets and a flow sheet that shows the current budget of what we were working on. And then we move over two columns to get us to the proposed 2013 budget. And I'll defer, the first budget is the Clerk Treasurer's budget. And I'll defer to Dan. Dan, have you read that?
On the Clerk Treasurer's budget, we had no salary increases for 2013, using part-time employees to streamline costs. Included in this was the HSA, the Health Savings Account, which these were not in there last year. We shored up our dental, which we were short on. The HSAs were increased by $5,300, the dental by $700. And then utilizing Google email services, the 2012 salary left out from Sewage Works budget, $18,206. And then health insurance premium adjustments are pending.
And if you look at the Clerk's budget, the current budget is $189,006. If you move over two columns, it's $178,996, a deduction of $10,010. On your bullet point sheet, the single asterisk is an indication that this was left out of the 2012 budget that we've had to plug back in in order to fully provide a budget for The second budget is the mayor's budget. No salary increase for 2013. Mayor's salary decreased from the corporation. Mayor's assistant total salary moved over from the clerk's budget. Utilizing Google email services, the 2012 budget, the salary left out from Sewage Works pursuant to the mayor was $31,482. And there are no health or dental premiums taken out of this budget. City Council budget. And excuse me, I'm sorry. Go back to this other flow sheet. The mayor's budget in 2012 was $88,767, and the proposed budget is $91,082, increase of $2,315. Onto City Council budget. Yeah?
Okay, on the city council budget, there was no salary increase for 2013. The tax anticipation warrant interest was down $70,000, and utilizing Google email services was another savings.
The budget for this year for the city council is $121,565, and the budget for 2013 is $51,006, which is a decrease of $70,559. The next budget for consideration is Board of Public Works and Safety.
No salary increases for 2013. The workforce development is down $33,000. Crossing guards were left out of the 2012 budget. We budgeted $55,000 for them. Pending liability, workman's comp adjustment for 2013. We do not actually know what to cost on liability insurance or health insurance before we do this budget, so that's really an unknown, and we're using numbers that we think will be right on that. Pending civil city retiree health insurance adjustments. Utilizing Google email services, and one Board of Works member's salary was left out in 2012.
The Board of Works budget for 2012 was $406,299. The proposed budget is $400,455,000, and our decrease of $5,844. The next budget is City Hall.
City Hall budget contains no salary increases. The city attorney fees are moved from the city court to the city hall. No change in the budget amount.
One of the requests that Judge Wells made was that we separate the city attorney from the court, so it has its own entity. So we've done that, and the city hall budget for 2012 is $33,100, and the change goes to $116,100. That's an increase of $83,000 over 2012. The next budget is Senior Citizens Center.
Again, there was no salary increases for 2013. Included again was the Health Savings Account of $2,640, which was not budgeted. Dental insurance increase of $600 to shore that up. Included is CDL payments for $250 per employee utilizing Google email services, the Gishwiler donations of $7,500, the copier lease concluded without replacement, so that'll save us $3,500, and health insurance premium adjustments pending. And on this copier lease, I would just like to say that we actually were supposed to send this copier back. We were able to buy this copier outright cheaper than what it was gonna have to pay to have this thing shipped back to Iowa.
On the Senior Citizens Center, on their budget, both of the ladies that work down there are required to have CDL because they transport up to 14 people per occurrence on the bus. That requires a CDL. The Gishwiler donations, every time they take someone to the doctor or they take someone to the store or bring someone to the center, they pay a fee, and that's generally a dollar or two. And what happens, that fund builds up, and it's up over...
Twenty thousand.
Yes. So what we wanted to do was to take the taxpayer dollar out, lessen the taxpayer dollar onto the senior center and substitute it with donations that come from the senior center itself. That way, that money could be brought in and used for something else. That's what that is for. And the asterisk once again indicates that that was not present in the budget for this year. The Hornet Park Community Center.
The office manager is retiring, Nancy Roberts. Her position is recommended to be a part-time physician. Sick day buybacks will be $14,450. No health or dental premiums for 2013, and again, we're utilizing Google email services there.
The community center budget is $144,168. That's the current budget. The proposed change is $126,354 for 2013. That's a decrease of $17,818. And that can be realized by the... Donations. And for her going from full-time physician to a part-time, the next person? Yes. The big savings there, John, is the health insurance. Right. Department of, or City Court, I'm sorry.
Okay, in the City Court, there's no salary increases for 2013. Included is dental insurance increase of $600. Bay lifts, $2,400. And utilizing Google email services and health insurance premiums adjustments are still pending.
And the law, or the court, the budget this year was $115,139. And the proposed change takes the budget to $116,050. An increase of $911. The fire department, I'll ask the chief to come forward. We'll run through this, chief, and then I'll have you make comment, okay?
Okay.
Okay, in the fire department, we had no salary increases for 2013. Overtime was increased by $25,000 in our low contributions. Included in this is dental insurance increase of $8,700. HSA for the health savings account, $63,300. And sick day buybacks, $19,700. Contractual agreement concerning second ambulance, $159,000. This is a new item. And the chief will go into detail about that. Air cards for the computers, $5,000. Repairs and maintenance category was decreased. Equipment category decreased. Vehicle leases, three staff vehicles and one pickup truck new. Utilizing Google email services. Health insurance premium adjustments are pending.
And the proposed, or the budget for this year is $3,034,366. And the proposed budget for the fire department for 2013 is $3,039,527. That is an increase of $5,161. However, we are still working through a couple of items on category one. But for now, I would ask the chief to address his budget for next year as it is one of the largest budgets in our city.
Yes, and thank you. One of the items we are addressing this time is the regular salaries. Right now, currently with this budget, I see a shortfall projected of $114,394. And we are working through that this time. The main issue I want to speak to you tonight on is the contractual services for the second ambulance at $159,000. When we start, before we started this budget process, we approached IU Health in staffing our second ambulance for a 12-hour shift. And they said they could staff that ambulance for a 12-hour shift, make an educational vehicle for preceptors, for EMTs, and medic students. With a 12-hour shift, they would provide an EMT driver and a paramedic for that vehicle. And the total cost would be covered under the $159,000. Since then, that was ran up the chain at IU. Everyone liked the program, was ready to go forth with the venture. And then IU put the brakes on it. They stopped, said we are no longer interested in that program. At that time, we contacted St. Vincent's Hospital. St. Vincent's Hospital is interested. They currently provide the same service for two of the Pike medic trucks up in the Pike Township. The cost of their program is significantly more. It costs approximately $17,000 a month for the medic and EMT driver. If we would continue on this path with that lot of amount, we would be able to provide the second medic being in service for 12 hours a day from April through December. That a lot of amount of money would fulfill that agreement with St. Vincent's. Just to make you aware, St. Francis was approached with the same offer. We approached several of these hospitals back in February, March of this year to see what the interest would be. They were approached, they never responded back to our offer. So it wasn't just limited to one specific hospital. The word was put out and the offer was on paper. With that, we have to make a decision whether we would like to continue on, run that program for those nine months, and continue on. With that being said, the reason we want to staff that vehicle because there's a need. There's a need for the citizens of Beech Grove to have a second medic truck available. Currently, there's an average of 52 runs a month where a citizen in Beech Grove calls for ambulance and ours is not available. Part of this is through the cascade effects with St. Francis Hospital closing. St. Francis South and Community South were already busy hospitals. By closing a hospital in the system, not only to increase our transport times, our times at the hospital with the busier hospitals, and our transport, you know, time back. So we're missing out on providing the service to the community. What we'd like to propose to you with this money of $159,000, we can't continue with a hospital to staff it for 12 hours a day. Or we could take an alternative approach and staff that vehicle with a civilian medic and a firefighter, have that vehicle in service for 24 hours a day. By doing so, we would definitely provide a service for the community, be able to increase our run load with that ambulance, and provide additional revenue to be self-sustaining. With the revenue projected, we projected $400,000 off our ambulance this year. Currently, we stand at $310,000. Our projected revenue amount for this year still stands around $450,000. With the increase in ambulance rates, we look at increase on that primary medic of $100 to $130,000. By adding an additional medic, we're looking at increases up to $200,000 to $225,000. Obviously, we're not in the business to generate money and revenue and, you know, that's not our primary concern, our primary concerns for the citizens. But we have to have a business sense and make sure we can sustain our services, provide that services to the community, even if it's cost neutral with supplies, equipment, manpower. We have the duty to provide that for the citizens. Is there any questions?
Yeah, chief, can you tell me if the community was approached?
Um, community, we contacted community, did not receive a call back.
Where is Mutual Aid following you?
Mutual Aid, we have an excellent, Mutual Aid agreement with IEMS for second ambulance. IEMS will provide and always will provide ambulance for us. We believe here at Beech Grove, we are a credit ambulance service. We provide the best paramedic care in the area. When people call for ambulance here in Beech Grove, we would like to provide them with Beech Grove paramedics. IEMS does respond, and they come in, they do a good job. With, this is one of the reasons we always request to have our engines 100% fully staffed with four-man personnel because they're busy making ambulance runs on a cardiac arrest. It takes every personnel on that vehicle. And they're waiting for IEMS ambulance up to nine to 12 minutes. The average response time for ambulance is eight minutes. Due to IEMS being busier on the south side, it's hard to tell where that ambulance is coming in from. So we still have to sustain that service.
So we would still have that?
Yes, absolutely.
Chief, can you tell me how many times a second ambulance was requested here in Beech Grove?
Yes, last month, it was 56 times. We had IEMS come into the city.
And during those 56 times, the other ambulance, were they in Beech Grove or were they in Minneapolis?
They were transported to hospital. Trying to break down the run volume, exactly where, pinpoint where they were, would be something we could do. But just like how we sit here and say we're no, rely on IEMS to come in the city, we still have a responsibility to provide some type of service for the surrounding area, whether that's, you know, on 465 or in our neighboring communities. We still fall into mutual aid with that.
Not being critical, but I remember when we did civilian EMTs before, and then they disappeared. Why is it good again?
Well, we currently have three civilian paramedics that work for us that came on December of last year. We have three civilian EMTs that were placed in our budget last year that were not replaced yet. We are planning to replace those. Again, we have them in this year's budget for 2013. We are planning to have those three EMTs on the street in January of 2013. To increase our civilian program would be a benefit to the citizens of the community. What I would eventually like to see is our EMS budget separated. It can be within the fire department, kind of like what you did for the judge. Separate the EMS side so we can show how it self-sustains itself and take out that budget medical supplies. With the increased revenue, we can plan for leases for ambulance replacement. And long-term, by doing so, by showing that revenue, making a plan for how we're gonna want to generate and then utilize the money, it decreases the burden to this council from planning for expense of a new ambulance. If we have some forethought and plan for those leases and plan to increase the revenue and generate, they're expensive. It's expensive business to begin. If we can help out and ease that burden from the citizens and provide the service, that's what we're here for.
And just one more, very much.
Sure.
Because we got the new annual, so do we have two?
We have, one of our new ambulances is in. It's in service. The second one will be in the end of October. So we have two new ambulances in the city.
But do we have two running now or just...
We have one of our own, and we have a loaner still.
Chief, was sick day buyback for who?
This is for Battalion Chief Grant. He is retired.
And the air cards?
The air cards, those are replacing the VERM on the apparatus. Mecca has, we receive all our runs generated. They come up on the computer with the run data information, hazard files, maps, et cetera. And currently, Mecca's computers that they use with the VERMs to receive this information on our apparatus is outdated. We attended a meeting at Mecca. It was called an end-of-life meeting for their program. And whether requiring everyone, if they have a VERM on their apparatus, this goes for police also, is it needs to be replaced by one air card or Motorola is coming out with a new improved VERM, which costs approximately $16,000 to $17,000 per unit. With Mecca closing down their computer for the VERMs to operate, we need to go to the air cards. We just received our air cards today for the apparatus so we can have it up and in service before Mecca flips the switch on the old program. We want to ensure that it's up, working, reliable, compatible in all our vehicles, and actually operating before they flip the switch on January 1 and close the program.
Questions for council members? If not, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Move to the police department with budget.
Okay, police department, no salary increase for 2013. Overtime increased by $25,000 in low contributions. Included dental insurance, $9,900 increase. Included health savings account, $55,500 increase. Certification paid left out of 2012 budget, $90,000. Air cards, $11,000. Utilizing Google email services. Repairs and maintenance category decreased. And health insurance premium adjusted, and that's still pending.
The 2012 police budget was $2,691,365. Increases to 2,000, or, excuse me, $2,875,27. A $183,663 increase. Chief, could you step forward, please? Just run us through your proposed budget for next year, please?
Some of this budget is an increase in salary, our base salary. We had, our five officers were on a lower base salary than the other officers. They were the chief, deputy chief, and three, or three majors. They were, their bases lower. So that was asked for an increase. Our overtime budget, we are asking for an increase. Last year was at $30,000. And that, that didn't even cover our shift differential. Is, the shift differential is 50 cents an hour that's paid to officers on middle shift and night shift. Some of this, the increase in the overtime budget will be coming from the school money that's supplementing our school officer. The school is paying for that. Some of the other increases, like the clerk said, it's health insurance, insurance that wasn't included in my, that I have information, wasn't included in last year's budget, which is an increase. Longevity increased by $100 for every officer for the next year. And that's just the way the ordinance is. We've decreased supplies, police uniforms, building material. As the fire chief said, we have to add air cards. That's the information we get for every police car that has a computer. We have to have this information. The VERMs are outdated, and they tell us that they're gone. We're gonna get air cards also. And to come into the next century, these air cards will go on our computer, and we can take that, we actually, like you know, you can take the computer out and then go into a home or a business and gather information that way or back into the station. And the citizens, I think, will see a better service done if we can show them how we do reports and get the accurate information right at that time. As far as utilities, we don't know what the increase was at. That's a guesstimation, but we try to keep it the same. Some of our, things had to stay the same because we have a contract, like copier lease. It's a contract, and that's just what we're tied into. But as said earlier, the, the school is supplementing $42,000 for the officer that we have in the school, and we haven't asked for another officer. So we're, we're working with numbers. And this officer also will help us on the road. But his primary duty will be to all the schools in Beech Grove.
Questions for the police chief?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
When is the health insurance? When will we have some inclusion? Because those are all unknowns. And it's hard to budget what you don't know. Is that negotiation started, ready to start? When shall it...
It has started, but just for clarification, on health insurance, they will not even guarantee you any kind of quote until they've seen the claims for all of September. So October the 1st, they'll actually seriously look at claims, and that's what your rates are based off. 90% of it's based off of claims. Ninety percent of it's based off of claims. If you have bad claims, your rates are going up. If you have low claims, you know, you may stay the same or go down a little bit. But insurance, they have every right to raise our rates as much as forty-nine percent.
Yeah, I know.
So that's our guarantee. We won't go above forty-nine percent increase, so that's not something I like to live with. But just to give you an idea, our, our rates claims this year have been very good, they're close to what they have been last year, so hopefully it'll be around that same number. And we're actually putting it out for bid, so we're hoping to actually come out with a little bit better. I don't know that that's the case, but also we can do is try and we have talked to several different carriers on liability and health insurance both where it's going to be put out for bid.
And I appreciate that. And then I know contracts where we have obligations, but is, is any part of that borne by the employee?
Yes, but.
Or is it always borne by the city?
The majority of it's borne by the city. The employees do pay some cost. There's actually some city employees we pay to take our insurance and I think that needs to stop. So that's a great concern and something we'll be looking at. And there's one other factor that is not in our budget process too that could really hurt us and that's the circuit breaker and we don't get information on it until February. And the treasurer said it could be anywhere from a hundred thousand to half a million dollars. Jeff, when we've talked with him before, doesn't think that it will be that significant. We hope he's right.
Jeff knows everything.
Increase was from last year?
On insurance.
Last year's?
It was pretty much the same. You mean employee cost or, or what the city pays?
When we talk about our insurance going up and it depends on our claims, ours will be very similar to last year. Do you remember the increase?
Seventeen percent.
Was it that? Seventeen?
I know I'm, I'm bringing up bad things, but I told you all last meeting, I hate this type of year because you're shooting. I could throw a dart and go, that's enough. So I have a feeling the same way.
No, I think it's things that people need to understand that there's three significant things that could bust a budget, you know, so I think it's important that the city understands that.
All right. Move on to parks. And the parks, Parks Board had a meeting tonight, they have their budget and I talked with the Parks Director a little while ago and I think they'll come to our next meeting and make a presentation. Were you there tonight, JJ?
Yes.
Do you want to make any comment or?
No, I'll wait until next month.
Okay.
If you're in front of me, yes.
Okay. If they can do that, that would, that would be fine.
Who is the president of the Parks Board now?
Beth Berg is temporary.
She's, she's official tonight, she's, she's going to be the new president of the VP.
Congratulations. But the parks budget for last year was one hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty-four, forty-eight dollars. This year are the proposed is one seventy-nine, six seventy-three, which is a decrease of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. But that's all pending pursuant to what we hear from the Parks Board. So we'll defer until next meeting. How's that? Cable authority, no change. Debt service?
Okay, the debt service, the 2002 bond has matured, 2006 bond will be completed at year's end, 2013, and we've already made the first installment of the 2012 bond.
So the 2012 budget for the debt service was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The proposed budget to the council is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars, a decrease of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The next budget is fire department pension.
Okay, on the fire department pension, we have a three percent cost of living adjustment factored in and retiree health insurance adjustment is not finalized yet.
You're having, we're going to give you a list of retired employees and/or spouse who are paid by the city of Beach Grove. And this, some of these would be affected by this. The 2012 fire department pension budget was three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. And the proposed budget is three hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's a decrease of six thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. That includes a cost of living adjustment of three percent. Now, in that list there, you'll see in people's names, the top half are under the thirty-seven and the fifty-three pension. They are paid by the city of Beach Grove. Their raise is dictated by what the council desires. The people on the second tier that have the asterisk by their name, those people are paid by the city of Beach Grove, their pension, but their raise is dictated by the state of Indiana because they converted their pension before June the thirtieth of nineteen seventy-seven. So every July, the clerk gets a message from perf stating that these people will get a cost of living adjustment in the amount not to exceed three percent. This July, it was two point eight percent. So what the clerk has to do is, is factor that in beginning in August. So some of the raises, that's why you have to plug in three percent for your pension base because you don't know what the state is going to do and if you don't do that, then you get yourself in trouble. So this is one of the reasons for the, the three percent cost of living adjustment, but it's to show you who is getting paid by the state of Indiana, whose, whose, whose raise is controlled by the state of Indiana and not controlled by the city of Beach Grove and whose raise is controlled by the city of Beach Grove. And that becomes relevant, so we wanted you to have that.
And when, when do you decide how much of an increase they will get?
The council will decide on October fifteenth. If you desire these folks to have a cost of living adjustment, for the people in the top list, the people in the bottom list is controlled by the state of Indiana. And the police pension for.
Same thing.
Same thing, exact same thing. In 2012, the budget was six hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. The proposed budget for the police pension with a three percent cost of living adjustment is six hundred and fifteen thousand and sixty dollars, an increase of four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And I think once we get into our financial consultant's presentation, he can talk a little bit about how the local option income tax and how the tax pension funds, the amount of money we have to raise is different each time. So we'll hear from Jeff on that. Local roads and streets, clerk?
The gravel decreased by ten thousand dollars. Street and alley improvements increased by two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
The LR and local road and street budget for two hundred, or 2012 was two hundred and five thousand. The increase presented to you this evening takes it up to four hundred and ninety thousand, an increase of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Two hundred?
I'm sorry. Do I think that two eighty-five is correct?
Two hundred.
Instead of the two twenty-one.
Okay, sorry, go ahead. That's all right.
Is that mainstream?
No, this is totally separate.
Just paving in the city is finally some relief for the citizens that's been driving on these roads.
The next category is motor vehicle and highway. And Brad, if you could come forward and go through MVH's budget for us, please?
Sure.
Okay, on the MVH, there's no salary increase for 2013. Included is the dental insurance of nine hundred and seventy-eight dollar increase. Included health savings account, five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars increase. Health insurance premiums adjustments are still pending.
Yeah, there was nothing real dramatic. In category four, we had a lease that paid off this year for our payload, that was twenty-five thousand dollars that's not in this budget any longer. There was a little bit of moving around of some salaries to kind of get that a little more accurate to who actually works on the street department. That's where you see a little bit of the change. We lost a guy last year, his family moved out of state and we replaced him. He was a full-time employee, was a part-time employee. So we saved a little bit of money there. Other than that, no major changes and overall this budget came in twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars lower, so we were happy to see that decrease a little bit.
Questions for public works director? Thanks, Brad.
And I might note real quick, on the last budget, LR NS, I know you had asked me at one point, Anthony, about the salt. That will continue to go down as well each year. We were kind of capped this year by the state. They noticed that obviously we had a really mild winter and everybody had a lot of salt on hand. So to kind of protect themselves from everybody kind of bottoming out what they bid this, this coming year, they put you at a restriction where you had to bid at least seventy percent of your previous year's bid. So we saved about fifteen thousand dollars. We'll have more salt on hand going into 2014, we'll probably save more than that. It's just something where the savings will be spread out over the next few years versus just one shot where we could really lower dramatically, obviously taking advantage of how much salt we have currently. So we'll see an overall savings of maybe anywhere from thirty to forty-five thousand dollars, but it'll take a couple of years to realize that full amount.
And in saying that, we've already purchased enough salt to get to the end of this year that is already paid for. It's not been delivered, they're storing it for us, but it, it's sitting in the salt farm ready for us.
Yeah, just wanted to bring some clarity to that. We have a couple hundred tons still that we have to take delivery of, so we probably can go through the winter hopefully with what we have plus that, depending on obviously how, how severe it could get, but we're in great shape, just to let you know.
All right. And the last category is the public safety, local option income tax.
Okay, on the firefighters, it's a twenty-four and a half percent increase to four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. The police is twenty-four and a half percent also for four hundred and thirteen thousand, eighty-five dollars. This is the city's contribution on behalf of thirty-one police and thirty-two firefighters. And out of that, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars was left out of the 2012 budget that we needed to shore up.
This, this budget will shore that up. The twenty-four point five percent is the city's contribution on behalf of a first-class patrolman and a first-class firefighter. Their pension base to the state of Indiana. The municipality and the employee has to contribute a maximum of twenty-seven percent of that salary. And the city, years ago, did twenty-one percent, employees did six, and it has gradually closed the gap. And the reason, the only reason it is in here this year and the foreseeable future is because the local option income tax revenue has increased and not only can we lower tax dollars on budgets, but we can also do things such as this and we'll let our financial advisor discuss that with us here in a minute. Any other questions concerning the budget? I want to pass out revenue that we anticipate generating. So you can see the other side of the aisle. And also I will pass out this sheet for you and this is the, what we advertise as the Jeff, at this time, could you come forward for a presentation, please?
Thank you, Ben Eric, council. As always, appreciate the opportunity to be here. One point of order, I don't know if I missed it, did you address the law enforcement continuing education fund?
No.
As an introduction?
Because I didn't know if it was going to be funded.
Just as it being advertised, it may be something you want to read into the record so that you'll have it live to work on.
Okay.
And adopt as you go forward. As many of you know, what, our function has been across the last eight years with the city of Beach Grove from budget perspective is to look at primarily your revenue stream, where it comes from, help to forecast those amounts, looking at what income taxes you're going to do, what actual collection rates you potentially will see, including looking at your circuit breaker losses on your property tax. Since it was brought up earlier, just to kind of touch on the comment from the treasurer's office in Marion County, no one has assessed value numbers yet for paid 2013. The assumption, everyone, whenever you have reassessment type issues or change in assessment methodology, you always want to take a very conservative view. The treasurer's office put out a memo where they're looking at potentially, you could see another four hundred thousand or so in circuit breaker loss. Problem is, they don't really have any good assumptions to go along with that, they're just being real conservative. Don't see anything glaring that they presented that we would agree with that. What we've looked at is, again, from a big picture perspective, have you presented a budget for 2013 that is within your incoming revenue so that as a buffer, you will continue to retain the amount of cash balances that you have, both in your rainy day fund as well as your operating balances for your other funds, so that you have some cushion to absorb circuit breakers that you could see in a 2013 and not be in a position where you cannot fund operations that you find out in the course of that year and actually have to cut services back or in the worst-case scenario, let people go. So the budget that you have before you, that's been advertised and presented, does basically utilize the revenue stream that is anticipated. It includes a circuit breaker similar to what is on the abstract, which is the billing worksheet for all of Marion County for the Beach Grove units for 2012. And as we look at, in some of these in particular, when we looked at performance through the first six months of the year, which is how we partly forecast the revenue, but also we want to look at the expenditure side, had discussions with Dan if there was anything that popped up of things that weren't funded, of which he's addressed several of tonight. Some of these expenditures are going to have to be made during 2012 and there is no other over-budgeted amount in a fund to take care of it. So tonight, you're also going to look at additional appropriations for a couple, three of these items. And the three that are coming up is fifty thousand dollars for the motor vehicle highway fund for the crossing guards. They're in the MVH budget, that's where they're being paid in 2012, but there are not sufficient funds to pay that along with the other operating expenses. There is money that in this budget has been allocated as part of your COAT money. Your COAT being your income tax allocation that you get for general purposes. You can allocate that to any fund that you want. Because we budget on an eighteen-month cycle, we look at what do we need to do for the last half of the year to reallocate those funds and then everything else goes to the ensuing year. And then everything else goes to the ensuing year. And again, we look at how we would divvy that up. The, one thing that you have to cover and is easiestly covered or most easily covered with your COAT money is the amount of circuit breaker that goes to the debt service fund. When you impose the debt service for the bond issues, you get a specific amount of property tax levy accompanied by anticipated vehicle excise taxes and bank personal property taxes to fund the principal interest on those debts. What happens in reality is a proportionate amount of the circuit breaker credits apply to that debt service levy. So you don't collect 100% of the property tax. It might be 85%. That other 15%, you have to make up with current operating revenue. So those have also been accounted for. There will have to be a distribution made in the last half of '12. And then it'll do, it'll again go in the last half of '13. You won't see those items on your budget forms. And we've had this discussion for several years with the Department of Local Government Finance. They ignore the circuit breaker for the 16-line statements when they show you your final proposed budget. And by doing that, what they're basically ensuring is you do not raise more property tax for debt service than you would have been allowed without the circuit breaker. So they pretend that you're not really going to experience those shortfalls. So you can't show it on their budget forms because if you do, then they count it as revenue and they mark you down another 15%. And you're going to end up with a cumulative shortfall. They've not chosen to fix it in the last few years. We have this discussion every year. They haven't chose to fix it for 2013. So you won't see that, but it really happens on the books internally for the city. Back to additional appropriations. And sorry about that tangent, but that tangent was COAT. For the $50,000 in the MVH, you'll have COAT diverted in the second half of the year to fund the crossing guards. As the mayor brought up, there's $120,000 for public safety LOAT. The state historically on the 77 pension amounts, which are the amount for your current employees that get paid quarterly for their pension in future years. Those amounts have always been paid in arrears after the end of the quarter. So the last half of 2011 was paid in January of 2012. So typically, we would not pay the last quarter of 2012 until January of '13, and it would fall on January of '13's budget. The PERF has decided that they're going to speed that process up and they're going to start to take them instantaneously with the payrolls by the end of the year. So that means lucky for you, 2012, you get to make five quarterly payments instead of four. So line share of that for you guys is public safety. You've been paying your public safety pensions out of the public safety LOAT fund. There is sufficient funds there available to do that. And the appropriation additional for you to address is $120,000. Third additional to look at, early in 2012, you had $750,000 from Amtrak dumped into the general fund reserved for the Main Street. Part of this has been expended toward your project. The other part has not, and it has not been appropriated at all. The recommendation before you is going to be appropriate the entire $750,000 out of the general fund to cover anything that's been spent up to this point and to earmark everything else out of 2012 to make sure that you're not taking cash as a credit into 2013 towards your budget. You want to make sure that that money is reserved and squirreled away in a pigeonhole for the Amtrak activities for Main Street. So those are your three additional appropriations that are included in this budget, but will be addressed here later as you go through that process. Again, as we talked about, we looked at expenditures as well as revenues through the first half of the year, helped put together the revenue forecast. If we look at a big picture of the budget in general, you have proposed expenditures almost exactly equivalent to what your revenues are. You are, again, bound by your maximum levy for property taxes for your operating funds and your operating funds that you work off of our general motor vehicle highway, local road and street, also of your two pension funds. Whatever shortage there are in the old pension funds, as the mayor was talking about, the 37 firefighter pension fund and the 53 police pension fund. Any shortage of the state distribution that comes in for funding everything you pay out of those pension funds have to be covered with property tax. There's not a lot of property tax because the state's taken up most of that expense. But some of that is allocated on here, again, so that you will be able to meet those obligations for the pension funds. So the pension funds have some property tax and everything else under the maximum levy, I believe, is going to the general fund. Then you have, again, your income tax, which you can allocate to different funds. What you've seen different from historical is you're going to see more COAT going into the local road and street fund in 2013 to help pay for these paving projects. Again, you have the ability of those funds to do that, to serve that purpose, and you have an anticipated amount in 2013 to get that done. Let's see, property tax, again, as we talked about, for the debt fund is, again, backfilled with COAT to make sure we cover that.
Jeff, could you go through this? I presented this to the council at the end of mine.
Is that the advertisement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. See if I've got it.
If not, you're welcome to add this copy here.
Thank you. Okay. Again, the budget notice that's before you is your advertisements to taxpayers. The parameters for adopting your budget are laid out in that you have to have a public hearing. You have a time period in between the public hearing and the adoption hearing so that you can have taxpayers remonstrate and bring their concerns in written form to you. If they do that, then you will need to make findings based on their testimony and what they've presented in opposition to your budget. The notice also is a maximum framework of what you can do. And as we've talked about before, your tax rate, tax levies, not as much your budgets, but your tax rate and levies are limited to the smallest amount that you advertise to your taxpayers, adopt on October the 15th when you make your final adoption, or the amount that is computed when real assessed value is known against the levies you adopted, which may be sometime next year. So these amounts are always inflated some, which gives you flexibility during the budget process to move property taxes between funds. But it also insulates you from when this assessed value is known, that you will still gather your maximum levy, which is a finite number, which is last year's maximum levy increased by the six-year average growth in non-farm income, which was 2.8%. So last year's maximum levy plus 2.8% is this year's maximum levy. And again, to make sure that you get all that, these numbers are greater than what will actually be adopted. You also have another factor in 2013 in that Marion County adopted a local option income tax for the public safety. When they did that, they had to in turn adopt a local option income tax for property tax relief. That amount derives down the amount you're allowed to levy and reduces basically your maximum levy. In 2012, the fund at the Marion County level was insufficient to fund the full amount of that property tax relief that Marion County had agreed to. The DLGF took away from your levy the full amount that Marion County agreed to pay, but Marion County is only paying you now a portion of that amount. We talked to the DLGF. They were unaware that they did this. They're telling us that they're not going to do it to us again in '13 and for us to use the smaller amount, which is what Marion County is really going to pay us. Then the people at Marion County contacted the DLGF because your issue was $140,000 or $150,000. Theirs is $14,000 or $15,000 million. Now the DLGF has stopped communicating on that issue because I don't think they're sure how they're going to address their concern because, you know, should you get that money back in property tax that you were actually shorted in '12, should it be loaded into '13? You know, that law's not real old. I don't think they've ever had this situation in the state yet. And they'll hopefully short that, sort that out in the near future. But that's another variable that's in this. For you to adopt this, what I would recommend is you adopt it as advertised, as presented for property tax rates, levies, budget items. That's obviously for you guys to discuss amongst yourselves as to how much you're going to spend. But from the revenue side, I would adopt this as it's been presented. And again, on the budget ad, you've got the summation of the different funds, the budget estimates as presented. Column three is the maximum estimated funds to be raised, and that is through property tax for the different funds. There are no excess levy appeals that are being pursued at this point in time. You don't qualify for any that we are aware of. And the fifth column shows you your current tax levy for 2012. I believe with that, I'd be ready for any questions that you might have.
More open for questions?
Hi, I'm Ari.
Yes, ma'am.
So just bottom line, what is our estimated tax rate to be as compared to last year?
Last year?
12, this year?
Yes. I mean, you know, anybody could pull that number out of a hat. And, well, really, for this year.
Don't like that, don't like that, okay?
Well, for assessed value, yeah, you're really going to be at that.
So what are we getting this year? That's my question.
This year's tax rate, I was going to bring up some information so I can share that with you.
You know me, Jeff. I usually like to see the little here.
Yeah, you know, like, again, there's.
I haven't changed.
Yeah, there's not a, very little change occurring for you guys. Okay, tax rates for 2012, total for the city of Beach Grove was 1.4081, so almost a buck 41 per $100 of AV. In the general fund, that amount was 1.3555. Debt service was a little under a nickel. And as we talked about when we went through the bond issue stuff, your 12 was less than 11 because you were in the final payoff of one of your existing debts. Fire pension was .0032. And police pension was .0007. So again, if 2013 assessed value grows by 2.8% and your local option income tax property tax relief in '13 is identical to '12, you would have an identical tax rate to '12.
If?
If.
If. Assessed values, you know, traditionally in years of reassessment, we've seen assessed values jump dramatically. But we've never seen, yeah.
Not traditional.
Yeah, we've not seen this many years of downturn in a run. And, you know, will this be the culmination of, you know, here's everything coming forward, nobody's going to say, yeah, you know, that property's really not worth that? And are we going to get this massive downgrade? And I think that's part of what the county treasurer is probably afraid of and why they're trying to present to you, hey, let's be ultra-conservative and look at potential circuit breaker losses. Again, you know, as soon as we get that information in the spring, we'll definitely bring that, yeah, to your attention, which, you're right, it's too late after you've adopted the budget, but hopefully it is early enough to change course of what you're doing, you know, to make sure that you don't run out of funds during the course of the year.
We've dug ourselves out of a hole this year. I think if that would happen, we could do the same thing next year. And hopefully, we won't have to, but.
Yeah, and, you know, you've got a little bit of the funds put away that came in the extra COAT money. And your COAT distribution that's been promised you in '13 is bigger than what we would have thought it would have been a year ago before the state found $250 million, a lot of which was yours.
Yeah, I want to go back to a specific line item on the crossing guards. Question one is how could $55,000 be left out? And two, is that still not shared with the school board or the school?
Expenditure side, I'll leave it in this regard. We've not typically done any of the line item specifics for the spending, just the revenue side.
The school doesn't contribute to the crossing guards. We put that down.
And it's $55,000 a year?
Yeah.
And are those part of the?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jeff, as far as expenditures and revenue, do you see this being a neutral with them too as far as the budget where it is a good budget for the year 2013?
It is. These are matched. If everything falls out correctly through 2012, you will have some cash balances in your funds. And if you expend everything in '13 and all the revenue projections fall out of '13, you would basically maintain that cash balance that you generated in '12. And again, we're not talking about a lot of cash balance, but it should be some to help you subvert a catastrophe if, you know, if you have circuit breaker losses that you don't anticipate in '13.
Any other questions back there? All right, Jeff. The budget for 2012 was $10,42,443. And the one that we put together and we proposed to the council is $10,537,525, an increase of $495,082 over last year. That sounds preposterous, and it goes against everything I've ever seen concerning budgets. But we have to keep in mind that $159,000 of it is ambulance and the rest of it is shortfall. but we have to keep in mind that 159,000 of it is ambulance, and the rest of it is shortfall from a previous budget. So, I never thought I would ever see anything like this when I used to do budgets all the time. I never come across this, and it goes against everything you'd ever want to do, but it will work. And in your opinion, is it fundable?
Yeah, it's all fundable, and, you know, again, I don't look at what the increase is. My measurement is looking at it against the revenue that's coming in. If you look at revenue in '13 that you didn't see in '12, you're going to have some additional ambulance fees, assuming that you pursue that program. You've got the reimbursement from the school that I believe you didn't have before, and the COAT increase from '12 to '13, that's the result of the correction of the state error, is not at all small. I can kind of give you some...
No, we picked up 98, $93,000 new dollars.
I think it's more than that. I know they gave you some backfill money. Yeah, see, I think in '13, once it all falls out, because your '13 allocation of COAT is not calculated by the city controller until after they get maximum levies, you have a different formula than the other 91 counties. But, I think you're going to be up about 200,000 for 2013. So, you know, there's a big bulk of your 495,000 for coverage.
Well, we funded this budget, and also, we talked about if the circuit breaker comes back at a quarter of a million dollars, we could take that, absorb that, and not miss a beat, which is, I can't believe it.
Yeah, I mean, again, that is assuming that everything falls out of '12 as well. And, you know, that's always one of the scary things, too, when you do this budget process. You're looking 18 months, so you've got potential problems to hit you in the current year as well as the ensuing year. But, yeah, anticipated, if we gauge it today, you would be able to absorb a quarter million dollar extra hit and circuit breaker as well.
Well, and on top of that, we put almost 300,000 in the budget for paving, which wasn't there previously, 160,000 in the health savings account, shored up all the dental throughout every budget, and like he said, you know, we went 159,000 just on the new civilian paramedics that we were going to contract out with. So, I mean, it's a significant turnaround, and I think it's doable.
And again, at no tax increase.
Well, if you remember several years ago, you guys would pass resolutions to limit the tax rate and say, you know, "We're not going to let it go over that." If you have a set assessed value, you knew what it was going to be, that was a safe thing you could do. When you got later into the previous administration and the circuit breaker caps came in, the council went away from selecting a tax rate and said, "Okay, those three, two, and one rate caps, those are the property tax protections for the people." So, that's where you're at. Will your rate go up or down? Yeah. You still have those statutory safeguards. Will there be winners and losers? Potentially, in a reassessment, there might be.
Any other questions for Pontiusville?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
At this time, are you going to stick around, Jeff?
Yeah, because you're going to talk about the additional?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's three people who signed up to speak this evening, and we could do it, I don't know what they want to speak about, if they want to come up now. Suzie, you want to come up now?
It doesn't matter. Part of it's the salary ordinance I want to speak to.
Okay, wait till we pull, wait till we do the salary ordinance.
Okay, can I ask one question?
Sure.
About the budget? What, is there a sewer budget?
Yes, there's a sanitation and utility budget, but it's separate, it's separate from the operating budget of the city. So, it's an entirely different entity, and you don't have to advertise it because it's a utility. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes.
And what is the, what are you expecting for a return from that business this year and versus next year? How much, and how much have you gotten this year from it? How much have you budgeted for next year in it? Do you know?
Don't know.
You have no idea?
Don't know the forecast of the revenue.
There's too many variables as far as the new increases and so forth.
It's a review, I guess.
Right, or even whether the increases will happen.
And Aaron Janetti and James Vaughn have signed, have signed up to speak. Do you want to speak now, or?
Yes, I want to speak now, so I wanted to talk about the pension base increase and the shortfall in category one for the department that I'm concerned with.
Do you want to hold off? Why don't we hold off until we do the ordinance on the pension group?
I'd like to add something to my budget. It's not really asking for more money. Dan and I talked to Keystone, is that right? They do something with funding. And our continuing education, it was predicted, given to them, at 14,000. And this is no money, no tax money that comes from the citizens. This is a guesstimation of what the police department will get. A lot of the funding, I believe, is done with traffic tickets, citations, and the continuing ad is just what it says. It can only be used to educate the police. We're mandated to attend so many hours of class in our firearms. We had 14,000 budgeted. Again, it's no money that the city puts in, but we can only spend 14,000, which we've done there, and once you get to that amount, you can't draw any more out of this account. So, we're asking the council to increase it either to 25,000 or 30,000. And again, it's only money that we get in that we can spend. It comes out of nothing of taxes, and they say, "You could put a million dollars down, but all you can spend is what you gather in."
Mark, since you and I have spoken on that, I got a little bit of clarification on that. It would be just like, it's an estimate on how much you're going to bring in, and it's just like, for example, permits or ambulance runs or whatever, it's a guesstimate as to what you're going to bring in, and just like if, on permits, if we budgeted 5,000 a month and we had $60,000 for the year, that's the most we could spend is 60,000, and what you're actually asking for is a tax increase because of the fact of, even though it's money you're receiving, up to that 14,000, anything over that 14,000 is a budget increase. Jeff, you might want to clarify that, am I right in what I'm saying there?
I don't think so. I think the revenue stream for theirs is specific to, throw those gun permits and...
Traffic tickets, citation violations, that...
Yeah, I think those are restricted to go into that fund, so eventually, it all has to come out for education for them.
Okay.
That's the only purpose it can be. I think it does need to be additionally appropriated. So, again, what's published before you is 14,000. If you want to do more than that, you'll have to wait and do an additional appropriation in 2013, or you can do an additional appropriation later this year for 2012 if you want them to have additional money to spend in 2012 on the training. Would need to be, again, published, done in the form of an ordinance, and of course, it's limited to whatever revenue is going to be generated in there.
Okay. After I spoke with Mark, I contacted Keystone again, and that's the way they told me that it was a difference in the actual budget that was...
You're right. In Keystone, it will be a budget increase.
Right.
But, its budget is not funded from the property tax fund.
Okay, so, as long as we did an additional appropriation, it would hurt nothing?
Yeah, and again, their revenue stream is specific, so eventually, it all has to come out for their training.
Okay.
In some future year.
I'd like to clarify that because...
I don't want to ask. The court, the money they get from processing traffic tickets, whether it be written by Beach Grove, or they talked about new, will you get any of that money?
This only comes from Beach Grove violations. Yeah, it doesn't come from a state or anything else. A portion of that citation goes into continuing aid.
All right, any other questions or comments by council members? If not, what I would like to do at this time is move to number seven and ask for a motion to approve the 2013 City of Beach Grove budget on first reading only, not to exceed $10,544,410. On first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. This will go to second and third reading on October the 15th.
Mayor?
Yes?
Are we going to have any kind of, like, a town hall meeting or a question answer or comment outside of meeting?
I'll defer to the pro town on that.
People may, you know, more likely to just ask.
I think it's a great idea, Ed. That'll be up to you.
Yes, I can do that, along with a town hall meeting.
Okay, back to number five, special ordinances and considerations, additional appropriations to the 2012 budget. Jeff, if you could come back up, please? Should we do these individually?
They're all written in the form of one ordinance.
I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance, or to the appropriation.
Okay, notice to taxpayers of additional appropriation. Notice is hereby given to the taxpayers of the City of Beach Grove, Marion County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of the City of Beach Grove at the regular meeting place at City Hall, 806 Main Street, Beach Grove, Indiana, at 7:00 PM on the 10th day of September 2012, will consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the budget for the current year. Personal services, 50,000. Total MVH, 50,000. Personal services, 120,000. Total public safety load, 120,000. Capital outlay, 750,000. Total general, 0101, 750,000. Taxpayers appearing at the meeting shall have a right to be heard. The additional appropriations, as finally made, will be referred to the Department of Local Government Finance. The DLGF will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriation made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken, and is dated this 8/29/2012, and signed by myself.
Motion to approve the additional appropriation as presented.
I'll make said motion, ma'am.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign, please. Next order of business, special orders number five, 2012, up for first reading. I defer to the court treasurer to read the ordinance, please.
Okay, special ordinance number five, 2012. Salary ordinance for appointed and elected officers and both full and part-time employees for the City of Beach Grove. Special ordinance number five, 2012, is an ordinance fixing the bi-weekly rate of appointed officers, elected officers and employees of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, for the year 2013, bid ordained by the common council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. Section one, that from and after the first day of 2013, the bi-weekly pay schedule for appointed and elected officers and employees of the City of Beach Grove be fixed as follows. Mayor, from the corporation, zero, to be inserted for the 2015 budget, $1,153.84. From the sewage works wastewater department, $1,210.85. Mayor's assistant, $1,603.46. Clerk's office, clerk treasurer, from the corporation, $1,233.11. From the sewage department, $700.23. Administrative clerk, $1,153.85. Regular full-time clerk, $1,153.85. Part-time clerk, up to $12 per hour. Currently, the regular full-time clerk position is not filled, and there are no plans to fill this position, but must be listed as an option. The position must have Board of Public Works approval and will be subject to proof of funding. Board of sanitation and public works safety. Board members, each member, $96.15. Crossing guards, each, up to $22.55 per hour. The common council, council members, each, $134.50. Court judge, $1,615.38. Court clerk, $1,605.15. Department of Public Works and Sewage, director of public works, $2,674.4. Billing clerk, $1,605.15. Office clerk, part-time, up to $12 per hour. Public works secretary, part-time, up to $12 per hour. Janitorial services, part-time, up to $12 per hour. Mechanic, $1,748.88. Commercial driver, A, $1,673.62. Truck driver, maintenance B, $1,604.73. Helper one, $1,444.62. Helper two, $1,370. Helper three, $1,279.77. Helper sewer maintenance, part-time, up to $15 per hour. Helper part-time, up to $12 per hour. Parks and recreation, parks director, $2,345.12. General staff, part-time, up to $12 per hour. Community center, facility special events coordinator, part-time, up to $15 per hour. General staff, part-time, up to $12 per hour. Senior citizens, community center coordinator, $1,336.31. Transportation administrative coordinator, $1,020. General staff, part-time, up to $12 per hour. For the following certification, add commercial drivers' license for bus per day, $9.61. Fire department, master firefighter, third year, $2,056.81. Second year, $1,956.27. Probationary, $1,671.12. First-class firefighter for pension base only, plus $2,000, $54,389. For the following positions, add per day. Chief, $865.38. Operations chief, 67308. Battalion chief, 38462. Captain, 17308. Lieutenant, $96.15. EMS duty officer, 5769. Engineer, 3846. Firefighters with paramedic certification, $96.15. Firefighters with EMT certification, $28.85. Civilian emergency medical technicians, first-year civilian, 1,362.72. Second-year civilian, 1,558.68. Third-year, 1,588.33. Civilian paramedics, first-year civilian, 1,558.68. Second-year, 1,752.06. Third-year, 1,864.23. Second ambulance contractual service, not to exceed 159,000. Police department, master patrolman, third year, $2,117.8. Second-year patrolman, 1,956.27. First-year probationary patrolman, $1,720.35. Patrolman first class for pension base only, plus $2,000, $54,389. For the following positions, add chief, $865.38. Deputy chief, 67308. Major of operations, 480.77. Major, 38462. Captain, 17308. Lieutenant, $96.05. Sergeant, 3846. Graduate of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, $115.38. Detective, $57.69. Civilian general staff, chief's assistant, $1,605.15. Animal control officer, $1,593.77. Receptionist, 1,268.69. Detective secretary, part-time, up to $14.19 per hour. Section two, education pay. Associate's degree, 500. Bachelor's degree, 1,500. Master degree, 2,500. This is a one-time credit available for full-time employees currently not working under a labor agreement. After one year of employment with the City of Beech Grove, a city employee may apply for this credit. Documentation must be presented and verified. Elected officials are not eligible for this benefit. Section three, full-time employees. Each full-time employee of the City of Beech Grove shall receive a longevity increment of $100 per year for each full year or major portion thereof of prior service to the City of Beech Grove as of January 1st, 2012. Elected officials are not eligible for this benefit. Fire and police clothing allotment. Each member of the fire and police department shall receive a clothing allotment of $800 per year, $400 which will be paid with the first paycheck in June and the remaining balance of $400 which will be paid first paycheck in December. The Board of Public Works and Safety shall maintain a discretion to annually establish and modify the amount of allowance. Civilian employees are not eligible for this allotment. Fire Department duty day pay. Each member of the fire department will earn, in addition to the regular pay, $12 per day for each duty day expected to work, excludes vacation days. Special ordinance number five, 2012 supersedes any previous ordinances or employee handbooks written for the City of Beech Grove. The rates for wages shown in this ordinance number five, 2012 are for positions listed and for the maximum bi-weekly rates. The bi-weekly rates are subject to approval by the Department of Local Government and Finance of a levy tax and rates sufficient to fund them. This special ordinance number five, 2012 will take effect January 1st, 2013.
Thank you, Dan. At this time, I will call Susie McMillan up to speak. Susie? Please state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Susie McMillan and I live at 81 South 13th Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. The last time I came before this council was on behalf of dispatchers. There's a couple of you I recognize that were here then when I came, on behalf of trying to save those jobs and save the fire attack center. And tonight, the first thing I want to address on this special ordinance number five, well first, I want to say something. This is just a disclaimer I want to read. Any opinions and any statements I made tonight, I want you to understand are mine. And mine alone, they don't belong to anyone else. They're just me, okay? So I just wanted everyone to understand that, that this is just me. To start off with, I wanted to say I am in disagreement with lowering Mayor Buckley's salary, and I'll say why. I pray for him and our leaders all the time that they will have good health and that they will live and do what's right for all the citizens, the nation's leaders as well. But as we all know, sometimes things happen and we don't control that. And looking at this salary that has been allotted, it is $1,210.85 every two weeks. The mayor only worked 40 hours, and I know they worked a lot more than 40 hours. That's $15 an hour. Now, Mayor Buckley is lucky enough, I think he gets a pension from being our retired fire chief, but someone else may not. And that's, that's not much, I don't think, for taking responsibility of being a full-time mayor for the City of Beech Grove. That's, that's my opinion. So, and the second reason is, is because, I'm not sure, Craig, you could possibly correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's in violation of state statute. And I think it's IC 36-4-7-2C, which reads?
I have copies for all the council members if they would like.
You have it, Anthony?
I have, I have ten copies. Exactly what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. It reads, "The compensation of an elected city officer may not be changed in the year for which it is fixed, nor may it be reduced below the amount fixed for the previous year." So I think the state was trying to tell us not to go in there and do that. So that was my first thing. My second thing, let me find it here, has to do with the EIP that caused all the hoop law last weekend. Last weekend, that ordinance that you guys withdrew looked pretty much the same as what's in this right now, as far as the EIP pay goes. And I listened to the meeting from last week where everybody said it was going to cut everybody's sick days and cut all this. I didn't see that in there, so I didn't know where everybody came up with that. I did see the difference in education pay. And this salary ordinance gives a one, is the same thing last week's writ that you withdrew that gives a one-time credit to employees except for labor. My disagreement with that is, I feel like that's discrimination. And if you're going to continue it with labor, then continue it with all the full-time employees. Continue it with the guy that picks up my garbage in 100 degree weather. Continue it with the man that plows my snow in his freezing coat. Continue it with all the employees. All the city employees are important to us and they all perform service for us and our lives wouldn't be the same without any one of them. So that is my disagreement with that, is if you're going to continue it on with labor, then continue it on, I'm going to ask you to continue it on with everyone. Don't, don't discriminate against our city employees and don't pit them against one each, against each other. I don't, I don't believe that. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Why, Miss Susie?
Yes, Dennis.
I agree with you.
I'm sorry, Mayor Buckley.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
And also, the reason I didn't want to take a salary from the corporation is because I didn't want to see anybody lose their job.
I understand that. But that budget, the way it is this year so far, from what I've heard from my husband, and I've been pretty extensive with my questions I've asked him, it, right now, it is funded for dollar for dollar, he said. He said, Mr. Peters stated that, is that true?
Not exactly dollar for dollar, but real close.
Real close. Okay, real close. And that's what he told me, and I know Daniel is concerned about layoffs. He and I both felt the same way when dispatch went. So neither one of us want to see one single city employee laid off. The EIP pay, I'll be honest with you, as it stands right now, I think it's exuberant. But if you're going to give it to one person, give it to everybody.
I agree.
I looked at, for example, IFD in Indianapolis, their max out is $1,000. This goes up to $2,500, which I think is exuberant. But then something else, I wasn't able to get a hold of an IMPD contract. My daughter didn't have one available to me, unfortunately. But I was able to get a hold of an IFD one and something that he explained to me too, which I don't know if our police and fire have, is Indianapolis has parity pay. Do these guys have that?
No.
That was something else that they have that...
For what?
Parity pay, where everything's pretty much, I think, you know, because both services are important to us. None of us could live without either one of them. So Indianapolis has parity pay, so that was something else I agreed with. But anyway, that's just my opinion. And thank you for all, to all of you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Karen Genet. Karen?
First of all, I want to answer your question regards to the three, actually, we laid off five, six civilian medic positions, and I say layoff because that's exactly what happened. The mayor walked in the door, we were told the budget was fine, was great, on a Monday, and Friday night, he called the chief at the time and said, "We need to have a meeting with all your civilians, we're laying them off." Luckily, our local 416 worked very hard and found him a job somewhere else that was hiring and was able to get him a lateral move so they wouldn't lose any income over time, but it was a straight layoff. Mayor Buckley had come in toward the latter end, but prior to that, we were already working to try and get the civilian medics back because that is an important part. It's a cheaper way for our city to staff the firefighters on the apparatus and try and meet NFPA 1710, which is OSHA, who mandates, the state looks at industry standard, and that is an industry standard item we look at. So that's why we really push for that. Secondly, I totally agree with the pension base increase. I think we're going on five years without a pay raise in the fire department at all. And the last that I can remember, a pension base increase is when we did the MOU in 2010. I'm looking at you because you were involved in that, remember?
I said no.
Nine, 2009 is when we did the MOU. Last time even our pension base has gone up for our retirees that are still under the Beech Grove plan, along with the people that are retiring to try and get their pension base up more, because you've got to keep in mind, even though the pension base says one number, we only, if you work all 32 years for the citizens of Beech Grove, you only receive 74% of it. If you work 20 years, you only receive 50% of it. So that's kind of what we take in account, even though it says one number, we only receive a percentage of it, depending on the years of service in which we have here at the fire department. And then lastly, I'd like to speak on, the salary ordinance for us is correct as far as the amount of monies, the positions. The budget, though, even me and the chief had had many meetings and discussed it, and we're working with the mayor to try and get it sorted out, but we're still short of a shortfall of about $114,000 in category one. Not two, but one. So we're working with the mayor, trying to figure out where our arithmetic might be off a little bit and trying to get that short up a little bit. Any questions?
No, thank you so much on the civilian pay, because I thought that was, that was the idea, that was a good thing, it was...
Oh, it is, it's just...
But it was good, then it was bad, and then it was good, but that answers my question.
Let me ask you a question. As a city council member, if you went to the public and said, "Hey, we're going to lay off six firefighters," how would you think that looked versus six civilian medics?
Well, I don't...
That's, that's what he...
Right, yeah, I guess.
...turled, and that's what he chose to do. Real quick on the second medic, we're still working out some of the details and ideas on how to do that, although I do think it's a good idea. I'm out there every third day. I rode the medic last shift, we made four, or, yeah, last shift, we made 14 runs on that medic truck alone, and we missed, I know of four in the city, because we were making 14 other runs. And I wasn't, I mean, not 14, oh, let me take, take you to the hospital because you fell and go doom, I mean, we're talking 14 runs. I believe we innovated a couple people, defibrillated, we had a couple, we had a trauma alert, I mean, we were busy.
They're very serious.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're having some sick people and we're, we're busy and working and it'd be nice to have the second ambulance in, also to have the ability to where we're not waiting, because I also ride the engine and I had to wait on medic three, medic twenty, medic fifty from, fifty from downtown at Wisher. So it all depends on what the mutual aid and what the closest, most appropriate apparatus is we have.
And don't take this wrong, but medics are sometimes more important than fires. I mean, and you know what I mean, if you got a fire, but in terms of how many happen?
Well, yes and no, I agree with you, but percentage-wise, the amount of runs, I agree with you on that aspect of it. However, keep in mind, of the 30 individuals we have on the department, 24 of them are paramedic firefighters on the apparatus. Today, we have four paramedics on engine two, we have one paramedic at station one, and we have two paramedics on the ambulance. So, and that's...
And I agree with that, but I...
But that's part of, that goes into our accreditation and the type of service we, we provide, because if you look at Indianapolis EMS, they have an EMT and a medic. And if you go to Indianapolis Fire, who surrounds us, they have mainly their BLS trucks. They have very few medic trucks. So, I mean, that's, I think that's important to also keep track of.
And I greatly appreciate it, so please don't...
Oh, no, no, I just wanted to make sure it was clear. I don't, I am not afraid to say directly on what took place with the civilian medics, because I think some people don't realize what took place and they need to be aware of it.
$114,000?
Yeah, the exact figure that we're coming up a little short is $114,394.
This is a mathematic error?
I don't know. We're, we're trying to see if it's on our end or we're trying to get with the mayor to get this sorted out and kind of realize it's a magic...
I'd like to comment on that for a second. At the union's urging, 49,000 of that was taken out of regular salaries and moved down to meals where it previously was, and for the last two years, that had 100% left in it, and that's the reason why it was actually taken out, moved up to regular salaries. So all that, 49,000 of that is just an adjustment, it's still there, and...
We, well, I'll tell you what we have in that numbers.
Okay.
Okay? 27 firefighters, third class. Four second-class firefighters, because remember, they move from first class to the second class, so you're going to have an increase in pay based off of the tier system we have for them. Three EMTs, three civilian paramedics, and position pay. And your 27 firefighters should be $53,477. Your four second-year firefighters should be $50,863. Your three EMTs will be $35,430 each, everything's each. And your three paramedics will be $45,553 each. And then your position pay works out to $86,000. And that's how we came up with our number.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Eric. Next up is James Vaughn. James?
Good evening.
Good evening, James.
I think we were introduced last week on the primary FOP route for the police department. Tonight, I'd just like to speak on the pension base. We're with the fire department, everything that he said also applies to us. Thirty-plus years, 74%, the math is the same. The only thing I'd like to add, though, is that it not only matters when we retire, but it also helps in retaining and attracting more officers to our department. Excuse me. Currently, I think Speedway and IMPD both have a higher pension base than us. It's a very competitive field to get into, and people actually look at this when they're trying to get onto a department. Rumor has it that IMPD is going to accept 50 lateral officers next year, which could take officers away from us, and that's one of the reasons, is because they have a higher pension base than us. So it's very important for us to try to keep up with them. I know we can't match them, but we need to be able to try to at least stay close. That way, we can at least retain the officers that we have, because I don't have to stand here and tell you guys, we have a very professional police department. You never see us in the news, we're never out getting in trouble. I think we reflect well on the community.
But that's the way it's supposed to be.
Right. It is supposed to be that way, and that's the way we are. But we want to retain those officers, and in order to do that, like I said, we had to stay competitive. And I, like I said, I know we can't match them, but we have to stay close. Any questions?
I want to say to you that there's sometimes, I would way rather have a policeman than a firm, so I'm not quite...
Well, thank you. There are those times.
They're all extremely important.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
James, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else out there who didn't sign up who would like to speak?
Anthony Kendall, 61 North 8th Avenue. It's been a while since I've been with you, to join you. I understand where the police and fire are coming from, but there's a, a lot of people in situations not as fortunate as yourselves. We all know the fiscal state of our country and our local government. The, the question is, is we want to pay you what you would like...
The, the question is, is, we want to pay you what you would like, but we need answers. Not answers to how you do your job, but how do we attract people to the city that addresses issues of how many paramedic runs there are. You have to look at the diversity and demographic of the population, there's a reason it's like that, it's an aging population in Beech Grove, it's just natural. What do we do to attract people who have the disposable income to spend at businesses that will attract people to this community? That will then, businesses will then follow those people who spend that disposable income. I'm not saying that we should be against this or for this, what I'm saying is that, obviously, we have some financial issues, and as a finance guy, at some point, we're going to have to say, what's going on in the rest of the country? When our police and fire budgets are at 75 percent, and you look across this country, and you're seeing cities file bankruptcy, we're not far behind that. We're getting very close to that. How do we ascertain that problem? Either through more taxes, to lower the percentage of budget for police and fire, but how do we do it? And there's just so much bickering that goes on throughout, about who's getting what, who's doing what, and my personal opinion is, we're not going to solve our problems that way. We're going to solve our problems by figuring out how to attract people to our community, people who want to be here, people who want to spend money here, people who are going to take care of their properties, people who are going to raise the value of problems, going to raise the AV, and raise the revenue of the city. But as long as we're focused on what we can't do, or what we shouldn't do, or who should get what, and who shouldn't get what, we're not going to solve the real problem. And the real problem is the shortfall of revenue, and it's only time before it's going to eat us up. And you may think however you want, but facts are facts. You spend your time, you do your homework, and you look, and you see what's going on across the country, and you'll find that what I'm saying is very, very true. There have been many, many cities filed bankruptcy because they, their budget, they, it's just no longer sustainable. So we are where we are, and there's a place we want to be, and that's where we have to work to get. And there's a lot of ways to do it, and I just want to say that, I think there's a lot of people trying hard, but I think we have to focus some of our attention as a city on a vision, and get away from these nitpicking things that are dividing us, and that's what really needs to happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? If not, I'll open the floor up. Oh, sorry.
I'm trying to keep this relatively brief. My name's Ryan Cobb, I'm one of the new hires with the fire department. I do not actually live in Beech Grove, my parents live on the Indianapolis side of Sumner Avenue. When I applied to the department, I was living in a condo at Arlington and Troy, my wife and I have since bought further south in Franklin Township. But this was the department that I felt was home. I've applied at 18 different departments, and I was hired on at another department that had better pay, it had more facilities, it had training officers, went through a full recruit class there, and it's in the metropolitan area of Indianapolis. And I'm telling you that our department here is extremely fiscally responsible, in comparison to what I've seen with other departments. We don't have an EMS chief, that's a salary that's not included, we don't have a training chief, we don't have a training facility. Those are things that we take upon ourselves within the department to work on, on shift, firefighter pay, members of our department are taking those responsibilities, and doing our best with what we have to make sure that we stay trained and, and prepared to be able to serve this community. And I say this is home to me. I know the, the area as well as just about anybody on the department, just because this is where I grew up. I'm a Holy Name grad, Dan coached me when I was in fourth grade in CYO football. This is where I feel most comfortable, and I'm proud to be able to serve this community. But even since I've been hired on, there was another department where I was on their hiring list that had called me to see if I was interested, and I turned them down, because this is where I feel at home. And I just wanted to say that I hope that we get your support, and that I feel supported by the, the community and the, the council here, and that I don't end up regretting that decision to stay here at home.
What's your home address?
My home address, 6947 Rutherford Drive.
Thank you.
Ryan, what timeframe over the 18 fire departments you applied for, what timeframe was that?
I started in 2005, applying in fire departments.
So it took you seven years to actually get to Beech Grove?
To get here.
And we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. With that, I'll open the floor up for council comments.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this, this salary ordinance. Contrary to what Mayor Buckley said about his salary not increasing, he failed to mention that the salary is increasing from the money he's taken from the sanitation wastewater department by $404.39 per two-week paycheck, if I might add. They're also increasing the, from last year, the mayor's assistant from $1,400 to $1,603.46, a difference of $203.46. Now, I seem to remember, believe it's last year when somebody was campaigning, that a letter appeared in the South Side Times stating that the mayor shouldn't have an assistant, doesn't need an assistant, and yet, we're increasing her salary with this new administration. I find that odd and uncalled for. So, with that said, that, I'd ask the council to move this down.
Anthony, her salary has not increased in four years. She just moved over laterally from the clerk's budget to, to the mayor's budget. Her salary hasn't went up.
But it is an increase from the last year's salary.
Yeah, $100 is longevity.
Thank you.
And I also told Dan how to rewrite this, would be the same as last year. This figure was plugged in after I met with Councilor Bell, because he had issue with me not taking the salary in the corporation, so I plugged this figure in. So it'll be adjusted back to the 2012, whatever the 2012 rate is.
Might I make a request? Just simply, rather than doing these biweekly accounts, do a annual amount of 2012 versus proposed 13, just so percentage-wise, you can see what, I mean, I know you can do all that now, but, and by, I have a, by a calculator, or a computer, or whatever, but, would that be a possibility?
Back to his salary, what actually happened on this, he wanted to go to a zero salary. When the state auditor was here doing our audit, what she actually said was, the mayor has the ability to take all the salary out of the utility, any part of his salary out of the utility, and so that's where that actually came from. He wanted to lower his salary to zero in the corp, and then he took what he was getting out of the corp and put into the utility. What he's saying now is, he will go back to what it was last year, which is the amount 2012 showed in the utility, and what 2012 showed in the corp, and it's back to where it was.
And if he doesn't want to take it, could he just not donate it back to the city?
That's his option.
I mean, you know, hypothetically, I'm just saying. If you want to get paid, man, okay, but, I mean, my...
That's his option.
Yes, that's true.
But to answer your other question...
But the other question...
To do it biweekly, that's through the state board of accounts. Right.
Okay, but I, just for comparative purposes, what, is there a percentage increase that people are getting?
$100, longevity.
Just $100.
And that does not affect elected officials?
Right, I get that, yeah. So, no percentage increase for anyone? You got my thanks.
Any other questions by, or comments by council member?
I, I actually would like to add also, I don't think that I pointed this out. Are, are we voting on this, even though it was basically proven that it's Indiana, against Indiana code?
No, we can amend the ordinance for the mayor's salary.
Would you want to go through that with the amendment again?
Okay. What he's actually saying is, the mayor's salary for the corporation will go back to what it was in 2012, and what the mayor's salary was in 2012 that came out of the sanitation department will go back to what it was in 2012 for 2013, on both of them, on the mayor's salary. So it will remain the same as it was in 2012.
Who made that amendment?
I don't...
It's open to the floor to make that amendment.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
Section... All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
And now, special ordinance number five, 2012, is up on first reading. If there's no comment or, or questions, I ask for a motion to approve special ordinance...
Hey, I would like to amend on section two on education pay. To include, trying to figure the best way to state this. To include all of our city employees that are not elected officials. Does that include, does that, how do I phrase that?
John, would you want to say, full-time?
Yes, full-time. Yes, full-time. Except it excludes anybody that's not under a labor agreement, should be our sanitation department, correct?
Parks department, your city hall people, there's a lot of them that it would exclude.
So the amendment is to strike...
I take my amendment back. I'll pass it on first reading, but I'll have to, I'll have to investigate this for better.
Okay. Special ordinance number five, 2012, is up for approval on first reading only, so I need a motion to approve on first reading.
I'll make said motion for...
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. This will be up for second and third reading on October the 15th. This time, we have special ordinance number six, 2012, on first reading. I'll defer to the clerk treasurer.
Special ordinance number six, 2012. Special ordinance six, 2012, it's an ordinance that adjusts the pension base and amounts of funds paid on behalf of sworn police officers and sworn firefighters by the City of Beech Grove for the fiscal year beginning on January 1st, 2013, and concluding on December 31st, 2013. Whereas the City of Beech Grove currently employs 31 sworn police officers and 32 sworn firefighters, and whereas the City of Beech Grove is a contributing member of the Public Employees Retirement Fund, and currently contributes 24 percent of a maximum 27 percent of a sworn first-class police officer's base salary to the Public Employees Retirement Fund annually on behalf of each sworn police officer, and whereas the City of Beech Grove is a contributing member of the Public Employees Retirement Fund, and currently contributes 24 percent of a maximum 27 percent of a sworn first-class firefighter's base salary to the Public Employees Retirement Fund annually on behalf of each sworn firefighter, and whereas each sworn police officer and each sworn firefighter contributes 3 percent of a first-class police officer and, and/or first-class firefighter's salary to the Public Employees Retirement Fund towards their pension account, and whereas the local option income tax has presented an opportunity over the next four years to gradually increase payments by an average of 0.5 percent for each sworn police officer and each sworn firefighter to offset costs associated pursuant to pension contributions and normal operating expenses within each public safety budget. Be it ordained that the common council desires to increase the first-class base salary of a sworn police officer and a first-class base salary of a sworn firefighter from $50,863 to $52,389 from the fiscal year 2013. Be it further ordained that the common council desires to increase the City of Beech Grove's contribution on behalf of each sworn police officer and each sworn firefighter from $13,053.36 to $13,325.30 for the fiscal year 2013. Exhibit, 2012 first-class patrolman and firefighter's base salary, $50,863, longevity $2,000, for a total of $52,863. 2013 first-class patrolman and firefighter's base salary, $52,389, longevity $2,000, for a total of $54,389. 2012, $52,863 times 24 percent is $12,687.12. In 2013, $54,389 times 24 percent equals $13,053.36. 2013, $54,389 times 24 and a half percent equals $13,325.30. Be it ordained that the common council, upon consultation from the financial consultant hired by the City of Beech Grove, shows cause to adjust the base salaries of sworn police officers and firefighters, and the percentage of contribution on behalf of the City of Beech Grove towards each sworn police officer and each sworn firefighter from 24 percent to 24.5 percent, beginning on January 1st, 2013. Be it further ordained that this special ordinance only applies to matters concerning the base salary and percentage of contributions on behalf of the City of Beech Grove and each sworn police officer and each sworn firefighter employed on the City of Beech Grove's behalf. Be it further ordained that this special ordinance will take effect January 1st, 2013, upon approval of the common council attested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor. Upon approval, this special ordinance shall be submitted to the Public Employees Retirement Fund for proper documentation and quarterly billing purposes.
Thank you, Dan. Floor's open for comment?
Yeah, I'd like to just find out where this $50,863 came from, that both the...
That was the, the $52,083...
Just the $50,863.
Oh, that is a base salary that was adopted either in 2010, 2011, or 2012, not really sure, but that's the latest adopted figure for first-class patrolmen and first-class firefighters. Don't know, don't know when they adopted it.
But we do have parrot here.
Yes.
Back to Suzy, yes.
And the $2,000 on top of it is 20-year service at $100 per year. Any other comments by council members? Ask for a motion to approve special ordinance number six, 2012, on first reading only, please.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will, if it passes first reading, we will go to second and third reading on October Up next is special ordinance number seven, 2012, part-time employee benefits, and I want to distribute this before I ask the clerk to read the ordinance. Or, excuse me, before Councilor Bell. This time, I'll defer to introduce special ordinance number seven, 2012, excuse me. Councilor Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Special ordinance number seven, 2013, is an ordinance that amends Article I... Special ordinance number seven, 2013, is an ordinance that amends Article I, Section 4, subsection A, subsection B, subsection D, subsection G, and subsection H. For the City of Beech Grove Personnel Manual. Whereas by offering part-time employment, the city can save dollars by not paying full-time wages and benefits often afforded to full-time employees. Whereas certain city services can often be performed by offering part-time employment and by property scheduling, and whereas the city desires to continue to offer part-time employment as a viable option when full-time positions become vacant. And whereas it is recommended that the common council continue to review the City of Beech Grove Personnel Manual to provide updates as needed. Therefore, let further be, therefore be ordained that the common council desires to amend Article I, Section 4, subsection A, subsection B, subsection D, subsection G, and subsection H for the City of Beech Grove Personnel Manual. Be it further ordained that the common council desires to make the following changes. Delete in its entirety and replace it with the following. A permanent part-time employee is defined as an employee who accumulates less than 18, 20 hours per calendar year. Subsection A, deleted in its entirety. Subsection B, deleted in its entirety. Subsection D, deleted in its entirety. Subsection G, deleted in entirety. And subsection H, deleted in its entirety. Now therefore let it be ordained that the common council finds cause to change the ordinance pursuant to part-time employment. We need to change that to part-time. Be it ordained that the special ordinance that can only apply to part-time employment. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall become into effect immediately after passage by the common council, testified by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor.
Floor's open for comment?
I have a question. By permanent part-time and the definition 1800 hours, 35 hours a week, does that mean that they are guaranteed scheduled 35 hours a week, or they can work 20 hours one week and 18 hours the next week, and 32 the next week? What is, what is the goal of a permanent part-time employee in the city?
They cannot exceed over 32 hours per week.
32? Well, then this is all wrong.
No, no. We plugged it in that way, just for insurance purposes. There's no part-time employee that works more than 32 hours.
Okay, but, and they're not guaranteed any amount? They're guaranteed to work?
They're guaranteed to work.
But less than...
Up to a certain amount.
Okay, because I'm just trying to clarify, because like, in business world, a part-time person works 32 hours or less, or, you know, whatever. A full-time person works 40 hours, or a salary person works 150 hours. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand this correctly.
Ed, you have a comment?
No, I guess you have a little trouble here.
Do you have any comment?
Yes. As far as, all's we're trying to do is bring the manual up to date. There's ordinances and there's manuals that conflict with one another, and what this actually does, a part-time person is an hourly rate plus workman's comp, and that's it. And that's what we're trying to clarify, because it had no rhyme or definition as far as, let's say, if they were working a holiday, if they only worked one hour a week, the manual actually said they could get paid for up to eight. The ordinance said something different. So what we're trying to do is just clean it up, and I think the intent with anybody that hired part-time people this year, I'll just speak for myself, it was narrowly rate only, plus by state law, we have to carry workman's comp on them.
And that's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. That's, I appreciate that.
A motion we accept as written.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That completes the agenda for this evening. I'll turn to council comments to my far-right Dave.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. Remember the fall festivals this weekend. Have a good time. Thank you.
John?
Congratulations to Beth Berg and Joe Prendel on president and vice president of the Parks Board. And I will do my best to change section two on this special ordinance five to where it includes the people that I believe need to be included. That's all I have this evening.
I have no comment. Anthony?
Just remember the fall festivals, Wednesday through Saturday, like Dave said, and hope to see everybody out there. It's always a good time.
Ed?
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and council for working through a lot of work up to this time, and we've got a lot more to do. In saying that, I believe we have another special meeting on the 17th. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we drop that and make it to the 1st of October.
Motion, councilors?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will meet, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed.
No, we'll meet the 1st, October 1st, I believe. I'll have to look at the calendar. I guess that would be, I think I still have to...
Man, I don't know if it's that easy, Ed.
Get with me after it's over.
I think they canceled these meetings a long time ago.
Just come to me. Anthony?
I've said a lot already, but thank you, Jeff, again. I know you work really hard on this, and I don't know how you sleep at night, so I can't.
He works late at night. He sleeps during the day.
Oh, is that it? And thank you to everyone, and I look forward to, I know there's going to be blowback, feedback, whatever you want to call it, from all this, and I want to hear it. I need to hear it so I can make that happen.
Ed, and you'll schedule a meeting?
I'll check tomorrow on the availability of the senior citizens and get that taken care of and make the announcement.
We will reconvene October 15th and 16th for the budget only. October the 1st is our next meeting. At that time, we will hear second reading of the sewer rate adjustment. I did talk to Citizens Energy. They are not even close to being prepared to come here and make a presentation. So with that, we will be adjourned.